Well, good evening. I'd like to call the school committee meeting to order to continue to review our budget. I'd like to welcome everybody and if we could please stand, start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we will continue with our budget review. There was some information requested at the last meeting that I know Superintendent Mertag and her team have put together that she'll be passing out here shortly. I just wanted, did want to open up with a couple of comments. Certainly, we're here for another difficult budget session. I know we're going to have a few more coming up and these are always extremely difficult for us this year. Challenges we've been presented in every year, they're presented in different ways, but this year's challenge has been special education, which the costs have skyrocketed to the effect of an additional $1.2 to $1.3 million that we're going to need to add just for special education. Our health insurance has gone up $1.6 million and our transportation, due to a change in the state law, has required us to increase our budget 500,000. Specifically, what that is for is for foster care and homeless students' transportation. That used to be an item that was picked up by the state. The state, late last year, changed the law to put it now has to be funded by cities and towns, which puts PBD in all communities in a position where that has to be funded. We have over 100 students that that pertains to, that we are now picking up the full cost for transportation. That could be students that are out of district or are students out of outer district that were originally PBD students that now have moved out of district for whatever reason if they choose to stay and like to continue their education within the city of PBD, which makes sense and I understand in terms of stability for that student, for that family to provide as much stability as we can if they have the choi, they have the choice to remain in PBD or go to the district where they move to. We have 100 students, over 100 students that have stayed here in the city of PBD. That requires us to go and pick them up in whatever community they are at and bring them here and return them home at the end of the day. That's an additional $500,000 cost that we were not anticipating, but because the state voted to push that on the cities and towns, now that moves it to us. So doing the math, that's quite an increase in addition to all the raises, salary adjustments that were made that all of our educators and administrators have earned and were collectively bargained, has put us in a position that's very difficult and not sustainable for the city of PBD to move forward. So we have to make some decisions. Our attend, our numbers at the PBD high school have continued to go down. I was notified a short time ago that the Essex Tech Regional School has allowed 89 students from the eighth grade class into the technical school and that's just, again, less students that are going to PBD high school that hopefully when we can hopefully get approval to build a new high school in the very near future, that will change. But for now, we have, the population at the high school has significantly decreased, continues to decrease, and now is less than the students we have here at our middle school. So that presents us with challenges, some issues that we have to deal with and we'll continue the discussions now on that. Ms. Mertag, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the last school committee meeting, you had some questions that I wanted to bring back some answers, so you, we just received a packet. Motion to accept.
Motion to receive.
Second.
Okay, so I want to go down each one. So Ms. Dunn, you asked me for the PBD high school booster club. That is in your packet. This square footage of each school building, that is also in your packet. Pre-K to 12 class size and enrollment, that is provided in your packet. The clerical positions at central office, we're still looking at data and I ask if we could put that off to tomorrow night or Wednesday night's meeting. We're looking at data to reduce, two positions to 19.5 hours. At the Higgins Middle School, you asked me to do a little research on the library media specialist. Currently, the students attend the library with a cluster teacher on an as-available basis and they re, they either receive instruction on a pre-arranged topic by the library media specialist or work with their content teacher. With the library media specialist serving with their, as their support, that support would no longer be available, but existing schedule will not be affected by that. In terms of running the library media space, that would fall under the digital learning coach and digital learning media center, which is happening now with the help desk and IT. Facilitating the loaning of the book, the process of loaning books out, that's something that we would work on and some possibilities would be substitutes during non-teaching times, student support and self-checkout. Oversight of the library in terms of budgeting purchases and purchasing would fall on administration. So that's with the library media and with the French. We are, with the French teacher at the Higgins Middle School, with revamping, it's all depending on the budget of the schedule next year, we will need to redistribute the incoming grade eight French students to either Spanish or Italian. Both courses would have sufficient room in them. Grade six and grade seven would both be an exploratory program where students will spend a number of weeks with each teacher. A reduction of French would mean that students would spend five weeks with each of the four foreign language teachers rather than four weeks with each of the five. So it's an exploratory process. So that's with the Higgins Middle School. At PBD high school, you asked me the five areas working with our team where we could reduce due to enrollment. None of these reductions are easy by any means, but looking at enrollments, contractually looking where classes can be, it's 28 to 30 for math and English. So the five positions are English, social studies, math, family consumer science, and community high school. So those are the five positions you asked. The attendance paraprofessionals at PBD high school is in packet, is in your packet as well. There's the job posting in your packet and some of those job responsibilities with the Aspen Student Management System will be able to tend to some of the paperwork. For instance, if a student has been absent for five or seven days, it can be flagged and the email could be sent home to the parent. So that's something that we're working on now for all schools, but in particular at the high school, that's something that Aspen can handle. Also, I'll be work, I'll be working with the supervisor of attendance, Alyssa Di Maria, to assist in this process as well. Special education legal fees and mileage was asked the question last week. Legal fees are for all the meetings, the hearings, litigation, guidance on suspension in the new regulations and other legal matters with 504s and there is no mileage at all to the cost of our attorney. The one-way transportation, the revenue increase would be 3250 for one-way bus transportation. That's 130 passes times $25 increase if we increase the revenue. And accountable unit number 17, the spreadsheet question. So there's multiple things here and I'll explain first and then I'll turn it on to, over to Mr. LaFleur so he can explain at length. So some of the discrepancies in accountable unit 17, when a new school psychologist or a new school adjustment counselor comes in, when we negotiated, the new people come in in unit A and not unit B. So that's where some of the discrepancies are. And the, there was a discrepancy and I will take full responsibility for this for the full-time equivalency discrepancy from a .6 to a 1.0. That salary is incorrect and the new one in your packet is in there. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. LaFleur so he can explain.
Do you have any notes?
Oh, sure. Sorry.
Yeah. You both didn't receive it.
Yes, they need to receive.
Motion was made by Mr. Hockman to receive, seconded by Mrs. Cappender. All in favor? That's a vote. Mr. LaFleur?
Thank you. On page two of the handout, I'm replacing section 17 of the book. Mr. Hockman, we have added line numbers.
Thank you.
So I will ask everyone to bring their books Wednesday and we'll collect them and reprint, since the information's a few months old anyway. On page two, I've made the changes. Mr. Farrell has gone through this line by line by line. Those top three that Mr. Olympia found, that was my issue, not the superintendent's. I take responsibility for that. But Steve did also pick up eight or 10 others that with the unit A to be changed in the fiscal '20 contract. He can better explain that part, but our net here is very close to about a $3,000 savings total. It was not what everyone seemed to think it was. The change with the unit B is what cost us a lot more money. So I don't know if Mr. Farrell can add to the, the unit B issue from the contract.
I think that superintendent explained.
So here's the 10.
Yeah, I mean, I have to admit, I was pretty disappointed to, to, to learn of this, you know, as we begin our review. Mr. Olympia noticed that there were some numbers that we thought were different or should have been much lower. To find out that they were, but then there were other numbers that were budgeted lower than they should have been is disappointing and puts us at a disadvantage as we're trying to work through this budget now. So part of me thinks that we need to really review this on a line-by-line basis because clearly, just looking at the very first thing, there were some errors made and again, puts us in a very difficult situation where we thought we had almost $100,000 in savings and then to kind of find out a short time ago that we're only maybe $3,000, again, puts us in a very difficult position. So I'll open it up for comments.
Through the chair of the committee, I agree with the mayor. We have a lot at stake here, potential job losses, some major cuts, so I'm in favor of going line item by line item and we're here, we might as well do it. I'm going to be here for a couple of weeks, so let's do the best we can.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Any other comments at this time? Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you. Before we go on, I don't recall whether or not we took a vote on the increase for the transportation for the one-way pass. I know we asked for the information. I thought we took a vote on it.
I believe we did.
We did.
Okay. So that's already covered. Okay.
Yeah, I think we took four votes at that time. One was for one-way transportation, one was for full transportation, athletic fees and tuition for the preschool.
So while, if I may, we have a pretty full room and nice to see everybody. We, if I may speak for myself here, are in a difficult budget process. This is my 10th budget. We typically, we, I don't think we've ever had a good budget in the 10 years I'm here. This one, from what we're being told, is going to be a little more difficult than in recent history. It has no reflection on any of you. We, as a committee and as a city, respect each and every one of you. We know you work hard. We know you give it your all for our kids. You treat them as if they're your own kids. It's difficult for us to be at this table. It's difficult for you to be in this room. It's difficult for you to hear the things I think you're hearing or I guess you're hearing. I, for one, am available to each and every one of you should you have any questions regarding the budget process as we move forward. We've made a few decisions at our meeting last week. As Mr. Amico said, it looks like we're going to be here for a couple of weeks digging through this and figuring it out. We have to work with what we have to work with. We respect you, we cherish your service and I don't know how much more I can say than there's nothing that we're doing here that's personal to any one of you. It hurts us to have to consider this, but it's part of our function and our job and we're going to do it openly and respectfully and if there are questions that are, come up along the way, please call, please email. We're happy, I'm happy to talk.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Yeah, certainly, this is the least, most enjoyable part of my job, but we have some difficult decisions to make. One, a couple of things that I would like us to review in the, the upcoming meetings is open enrollment and school choice. I really believe strongly we have to look at not moving forward with both of those programs. Open enrollment is the ability for families to have their students within the city of PBD that live here go to a school of their choice to petition to move to different schools. I think we have to put that on hold for one year, except we would grandfather in those students that have already moved and any siblings that would move after that as well as any students that are children of our educators and administrators. School choice as well, those are students that we were allowed to come from other cities and towns into PBD. For many years, we were having a lot more students leave the city of PBD to go to other schools. A few years ago, we made a decision as a committee to allow for school choice, to allow for students from other cities and towns to come here. And now we are receiving many more students than leave here. However, it's put some, it's created an impact on our budget. I would think that we should take a serious, serious look at continuing the school choice program, again, except for those families that are already a part of our system and any siblings that are brothers and sisters of those students that are already here. As well as, again, for our educators, administrators, they would allow those students to be part of our system as well if it's something that's convenient for our, our staff here. Those are things we have to look at as well as working on, preliminarily working on a proposal for an early retirement possibility as well, not just for our, our teachers and staff and administrators and, but also citywide, our other departments as well. That's a, so that's something that also we need to consider and I'll be reaching out to Mr. Nelson, Mrs. Henry on that to discuss it, but that's something we're looking at our other unions as well. And I could tell you that this is not a situation where all of it is falling on the schools. In fact, it's quite the opposite. I've had very difficult meetings with our police, fire, public safety, DPW, all of our city departments, our library. There's going to be some significant cuts there that are not pleasant and are not easy for any of us to deal with. What I'm trying to do is get as much money as I can to education and public safety. Those of all, I always felt are the right investments for our city. I can tell you the Department of Public Works budget will be cut significantly as well as some other city departments. I'm trying to make this work as best we can, but the number that has been proposed by Ms. Mertag is not sustainable for us and we can just not, we just cannot meet. So here we are and we're going to try to make the best decisions we can as a community and as a board. But I think those are a few programs that we've offered in the past that we have to look at, whether they're workable for us to continue and also look at other options that might work for some of our employees here in the city of PBD. So those are things I'm working on that will be a part of upcoming meetings. Open it up for any comments, questions, thoughts, requests for information? I'll open it up now, Mr. Amico.
Thank you, through the chair. Superintendent, what is the financial impact on school choice and open enrollment? What's the, what's the number, the savings? Or, Mr. LaFleur?
That all depends on what we do. If we put all our children back into their home schools, it will be different than what it is right now. We have 311 open enrollments for next year. So if we leave things as is and grandfather, as the mayor said, leave everybody in their home schools, then, then won't be any really financial impact, but we'll get things settled down and I'll be able to see, you know, this is my first year as superintendent, so I'll be able to see the whole district differently. Same thing with school choice. Yes, we voted on that last, last meeting. However, I feel as though I can really take a good, strong look at that to see where that impacts us financially as well.
Thank you.
My feeling was just a one-year hold to, again, allow a new superintendent, new assistant superintendent, new business manager, the opportunity to find out where the costs are. We receive money from cities and towns outside. When a student comes here, we receive money from them. However, we have to review where that money's going and how it's being spent. So I think that's something if we put a hold on for one year and really reviewed, if this is a program that's working for us, that would be my recommendation. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Through you to Superintendent Mertag or to Mr. LaFleur, do we have the figure for this year of what, what we send out for students who, PBD students who attend school in other districts and then what we receive in from people from other districts who attend PBD schools? Do you have that number?
In, it's 540. It was 540,000 in.
In. I do not have that number right now, Mrs. Dunn.
It's 5500 dollars per child, either direction.
Okay. I'll get that for next meeting, tomorrow night.
So my feeling is we have a $74 million budget. That's FY '19. We have about 6,000 students in our system. I think that comes to about 12,000 per student and we're receiving from our, when a student comes in from out of city, we're receiving 5,500. To me, that is someplace we have to look. Thoughts, comments, questions? Again, any requests for additional information from Ms. Mertag and her team? Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard to the high school positions that we're talking about and just going through the budget book that we had, I haven't gone through the new handout. I'm looking at, you were talking about in English, one of the FTEs would be for the staff in the English department.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm looking at the book. Like I said, I'm not looking at the handout we just received. We have 15 FTEs there presently and for the proposed budget, there were 14 FTEs. Is that the one reduction that you're looking for or are you looking for a reduction in addition to that?
No, one reduction.
That, that's already in the, in the book?
One reduction.
Okay. And then for social studies, I see we have 15 FTEs for this fiscal year and 16 proposed for fiscal year 1920.
So we're proposing one less.
So that it remained at 15?
No, it would be 14.6 because that's the FTE, the .6 is the department head.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Mr. Olympia?
Yeah. Yeah, through the chair. This might be a question for Ms. Mertag. Was there, did you take a look at the foreign languages up to high school and is there any opportunity there?
We did. We looked at combining classes and we're taking a look currently at Latin, German, and Greek.
Okay.
Looking at some combination of classes, but no reduction in teaching.
Okay.
But perhaps reduction in course offering. We will definitely have French, Spanish, Portuguese, and Italian, definitely. Our numbers show, our enrollment show and on course tallies, but low numbers in Latin, German, and Greek.
Okay. That's all for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Olympia. Mrs. Cappender?
Thank you, through the chair. Mr. LaFleur, did you have a figure for any high out, low in?
They're embedded in each individual account.
Oh, so there wasn't a one?
Where there's a vacancy.
Yeah.
Only when it's in writing back to us, so.
Okay.
There are several on the horizon, we hope, but only the ones that we have paper on are embedded in the budget.
They're already embedded?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, to you, Mr. Mayor. Were you able, last time we met, we spoke about the elementary, extracurriculars, and intermurals and we had a conversation about parks and rec, taking that and we, I was wondering if you maybe had any, and you said, I think you indicated that you were going to see if you can get some more information about contribution from the city side to the school budget to cover those expenses. And I don't know if you had a, a chance to do that or if I missed?
No, I don't have a definite answer for you. I am trying wherever I can to look at opportunities where we could shift some of the school costs over to the city side and I thought that might be something that we could look at. Some of the intermural programs, some of the elementary after-school programs could be maybe shifted over to the park and rec department budget. That puts a little pressure on that budget, but I'm trying to find, again, opportunities to lessen the impact here. I don't have an answer for you yet.
Fair enough. And through you to Ms. Mertag and Mr. LaFleur, do we have any further information from the administration regarding other proposed areas to look at?
Yes. That's next.
Okay.
If you may ask one question.
Yep. Mr. Amico?
Through, through the chair, Ms. Mertag. We talked about early retirement earlier on. How many people would be in that vicinity, so to speak, close to it or?
We don't have an answer at this time.
Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it's a question regarding one of the cuts at the high school commute, on the family consumer science. In the budget, it says we have two. Would you go down to one?
In the budget, we have two. We currently have one. Family consumer science. Yes.
Uh, I believe it's tab.
10.
10.
10. Sorry. First page.
It should be one.
The 13th line.
Mrs. Dunn, do you have a, I'm sorry, is there a question on?
No, just, it has two here, so I wondered, are we going to one?
It is one and those responsibilities would go to someone else once we figure out the whole entire schedule.
Okay. And, um, thank you.
Yeah, just on that point while we're there, the, the budget does have two FTEs for this fiscal year and next fiscal year.
No, it's, it's one. One altogether.
I believe you. It's one body that's there now?
One FTE and we're reducing to zero.
Okay. So even without the reduction that you're proposing, we should have a savings from what the budget reflects, the proposal reflects. And I don't know what the salary is for the one staff member that's there now, but.
That will reflect that tomorrow night.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't know if it's for you or for Mr. LaFleur or Mr. Farrell, where do we find the line item for the community high school staff member that you're, that's being proposed? I just don't see it.
Here's accountable units. It's not on, it's on the high school 10. Oh, it's on the 17 though, I think. Sorry. It's accountable unit 17 in the middle of the page, on page three.
I see it. Okay. Thank you.
You are. I have one, one correction. I forgot one person. Just to come back, I'm sorry, I made an error. There are two voca, family consumer science will be reducing to one and that will reflect in our budget book. There are two. It's going to affect one person. One FTE.
Are they both chapter 74 funded?
One is, one isn't. One is, one isn't.
All right, there's no further questions at this time. Ms. Murtagh, I think you have revised list A.
This is just another list A that we'll go through, that we, were presented the other night.
Further motion to receive by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Arnotice. All in favor, it's a unanimous vote to receive. So Ms. Murtagh, were there any changes?
On here, no. I just went through everything in the packet that I gave you, with the enrollments and everything in there. And we will talk about enrollments in a little while, too. These are the additional proposed reductions.
There are motion to receive, I need to. Further motion to receive by Mr. Amico, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. All in favor, receipt of document two. It's unanimous vote. Want to jump into it?
You ready? Okay. So, any and all of these possible reductions will impact anything we do in our school system. So, as you can see, on list B is the reading specialists. And the kindergarten paraprofessionals. So with the reading specialist, one thing that we would add is a nineteen point five hour reading tutor to each school. To be able to help in some sort of intervention.
Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, just, if I could, for the record. We're getting these, everybody sees, we're just getting these now. And it's hard to absorb all of this and make immediate decisions. So you're gonna hear a lot of us thinking out loud, because it's the first we've seen of this. On the reading specialist, how many years have we have the reading, had the reading specialist at every elementary school?
It's a good question. I was principal at the Carroll. So, has to be at least ten, twelve, even more. Yes.
More? Because I can remember when we got rid of reading specialists, then it was a slow buildup to get them at every building. If the reading, if you go to reading tutors, are they pay, are they able to be paid under Title I? Does that keep the reading program in Title I funds?
So what would happen is you'd have to have some in operating, some in grant funding. So you'd be able to do both.
And then the kindergarten paraprofessionals. Again, we've been down that road before, where we, we got rid of paraprofessionals in the kindergarten classes, and then discovered that we really couldn't operate without them. And are they paid under Title I, or just one?
A few were paid under Title I, most are paid in operating. There's no kindergarten. There were twenty-four, and I believe eight are paid on the grant.
Was there any consideration given to going back to half-day kindergarten?
It's a thought, but not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. LaFleur?
Yeah, through the chair. Ms. Murtagh, the handout that you just gave us with the reading specialist.
Yes.
I'm confused with, it says less unemployment column. What, what is that adjustment?
Mr. LaFleur, I'll turn that to you. I'll have a different view.
Per the city finance director, who are currently, I use the word currently, we may adjust. Factoring in about thirty-three percent of salary will be paid out in unemployment. So we'll have to increase the unemployment budget by that amount.
So we're paying for, I mean, is that the unemployment tax, or?
Well, we're self-funded. We get a bill from the state when people collect.
Okay. So it's different from private. But that might adjust up or down? Is that, this isn't a final number, this column? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's under discussion. I can't imagine every single person that would be let go wouldn't be able to find unemployment before the unemployment ran out.
Right.
So we are talking about adjusting that.
Okay. So that's.
I, I think that, my feeling is that number goes significantly down.
Yeah.
To our benefit.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, too.
Significantly.
Yeah.
And typically, for health insurance, a single plan is about eight thousand dollars. A family plan, we estimate at about twenty thousand dollars. So I think that number on the health insurance goes up. Yeah, absolutely. Why don't we now go back to the first document? Ms. Murtagh, was there some items you wanted to touch on?
Yes, I was asked to look at closely at enrollments. And I have, as of this week, we look at them daily. However, there are some schools that are more transient than others. I said, possible reduction is to elementary teachers due to enrollment. So you can see in your packet. Now, these, these numbers fluctuate daily. So I'm looking at a possible reduction at this point, at the, one at the Carroll, one at the Center, one at the McCarthy, and one at the South. But it will only be two at this point, until I'm comfortable with the numbers to be able to meet class size obligations. And I will keep you updated as we go through this budget process. One, one area that I'm watching carefully is kindergarten, because people have just registered, but some people haven't come in to register. So those numbers, we have actual packets in front of us that people have registered, and then we have people that are coming in slowly. And then a lot of them come in in July and August. Does everybody understand the table going across? For the enrollments?
Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, I think it might be ultra-aggressive. But is there an opportunity also at grade three at the Welch? Let me be right on a line, but just looking at.
We have, yeah, we have three openings. It's a transient population.
I know.
High needs population, economically disadvantaged. So we have three openings. That's something I'll watch closely.
Is there any thought on doing some voluntary redistricting? Like I look at the West, grade two with thirty-three students. Is there any opportunity to inquire as to whether students wanna go to the McCarthy or the Burke, and where there is room, and perhaps have some reduction there? Same thing with grade five at the West. I don't mean to pick on the West or the Welch, they're just on the same page.
That's something that I can look into, but that's something moving forward that you know is a project that I will be taking on in the future.
Yeah, no, I know that, but we won't get to that before this budget, so.
It's something that I can look into for you.
Yes, and if I could speak on that for a moment, the redistricting. I think I've always been very open with my feelings that I am opposed to redistricting unless we're in a situation where it, it has to be looked at. I went to a redistricting when I was in school at the South School, and it was very traumatic. I know for many families, many kids to have that, to have to make that adjustment. So I've always been very reluctant to move forward with the redistricting plan. I know it's been looked at in the past, but that, to me, is something that I, really something that is not high on my agenda. However, I think this is something we have to look at, we have to review. You know, Mr. Hockman, you and others have brought that up, and you're right that we have to review it. And, but again, I've just been very reluctant to move forward with that. But I think we're at the point where we have to look at. Some of our schools, some, I know some of our schools are at capacity, others are not, and that has to be reviewed. So I think probably over the summer, I'll, once we get through with this process, I think that's something we have to do. Again, I move forward with great reluctance, but I think it's something we have to do.
Mrs. Kopfender?
Thank you. Through the chair, Ms. Murtagh. Have you identified the reduction district-wide of the eight full-time paras?
We're in that process right now. There's two through attrition, and then six that we're looking for to make sure that all of our students are properly taken care of.
Would you have that for the next meeting? That's a cost saving of two hundred thousand approximately. And if it's identified as illegal, legally acceptable, that's a significant saving.
If you could give me to Wednesday, that would be great.
Wednesday.
Wednesday's meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, just trying to think a little bit about the custodian position. Looks like we have someone retiring in a building that we're gonna have a major MSBA project starting. Is that perhaps something, and I hate the capitalized salary, but is that something we can build into a MSBA budget? If we needed to replace that position?
That's a good question. I don't know. I think we can find that out.
I mean, there's gonna be certainly extra or additional work for the staff there to begin with because of the construction. So we can certainly justify that as part of a capital budget if we needed to.
Any other information requested for tomorrow night's meeting? Please let us know as well. We're on for five-thirty tomorrow here. And I know we also have meetings set up for Wednesday, and then also all next week as well. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, while we're here and we've received what we have tonight, I'll say for the record, and I'd be hard-pressed to vote for elimination of reading specialists. I mean, you don't get more fundamental than that. It's, we don't, we don't, and I know preaching to the choir in this room, we all in this committee have worked hard to add tier-two interventions. And we have a population in the city that needs these services. If we looked at the caseload for each reading specialist that's in the city, it's more than they can handle to begin with. Ms. Dunn's right. We can't, we, I, I can't go back on something as basic as a reading specialist. You know, I'd have to look at a lot of other things. And I know we're gonna have a hard, hard decisions with this budget. But I'd need to look at a lot of other things before I came close to a reading specialist.
Mrs. Dunn?
I would like to have figures on cutting kindergarten to half-day. I think it's horrible. I think it's ridiculous. But one thing that I honestly don't like is the way that kindergarten has turned into first grade. We've got those kids all day, and maybe in a half-day, they'd be able to use developmentally appropriate education as opposed to what's been mandated by the state for achievement on a test. I'm disappointed also to see a suggested cut on consumer science. I don't like to see these cuts to any type of vocational education at the high school. I think that we need to be increasing it. I've said that before. I think that it's, it's really very, very risky to do that type of a cut because of the programs that we could offer to our students. And I understand it. I know these are budgetary decisions. They've never been easy. But right now, we're basically facing a situation where we need to teach the children and keep them alive. We've got, we need teachers, and we need people that can help kids with the social-emotional problems of today's society. And I don't know how we can do that without being able to afford the staff that we need to send those kids out into the world well-prepared.
Mr. Hockman?
So the conversations are gonna get more and more difficult. And I think we're gonna have the audience with us throughout. But we do need to make some decisions. High school does have enrollment that's decreasing. It's decreasing, it's decreased dramatically in the last few years. I don't know if my committee members are willing or ready to take up the, at least three of the positions that are being suggested, being English, social studies, and math. We, none of us want to cut anybody, but. We, none of us want to cut anybody, but those are, those are three. I assume superintendent's spoken to the principal as well as the department heads, and with those cuts, services to students remains at least the same as it currently is and has been. There's not a dramatic increase in class size, if, if any increase, so, not that I'm comfortable with it, but we do need to make some decisions at some point. We can't sit in the room, and we gotta, we gotta do something. So, if people need more time with this, I'm happy not to move forward on it tonight, but if, if not, then we gotta start somewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Olympia?
Yeah, through the chair. I would be actually a little more comfortable with maybe another night or so going through the book and the formulas, and I might have a few more questions before we start.
Fair enough. In that case, are we ready for a motion of recess, or are we still going?
Yeah, why don't we absorb all the information we were given today? Meet back here tomorrow, 5:30. There might be some sections that I'm gonna propose we go through line by line. There might be some other, I don't, I don't know if we have to go through every item, but there are some sections I think deserve and require line by line. If there's some that you would like to do that, please let us know. We can gather the information. But why don't we reconvene tomorrow at 5:30 here?
Anything maybe tomorrow night that I can get, I can send it to you.
Okay. All right, any questions before we adjourn? All right, Mrs. Dunn?
Just one question. The packet, is this to replace?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, okay, thank you.
We intend to replace most of the book at the end of the week. After the Wednesday session, we'll collect them and deliver them back to you.
Do you want seventeen, Tom?
No. We'll shred it.
All right, motion to adjourn. Thank you.